Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to this regular called meeting of the Temple City Council for Thursday, December the 4th. If you'll please rise, Father Tom Chamberlain will lead us in an invocation and pledge allegiance. Father Tom, welcome.
Let us pray. God our heavenly Father, you have given all authority to us, and we are responsible to you for the use of that authority. So we pray for our city leaders that you will guide them, grant them wisdom and understanding of the matters that are brought to them, that they may truly make good decisions, sure for the good of our community. Pray also for the residents who are presenting concerns here before the council, that they also will present their concerns in a clear and understandable way, and that together we may all work for the betterment of our community. In all of this, we pray in the name of your son, Jesus our Lord. Amen.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic
for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, thank you for being with us. Appreciate it. Next item on the agenda is a public appearance. This item is to receive comments from Mr. Travis Brett regarding drainage issues on his property at 1002 East Shell Avenue. Mr. Brett? And for council, while Mr. Brett's coming up, this is a public appearance, a posted item, and unlike the public comment section, you can certainly dialogue with Mr. Brett, respond to him, or ask him questions as well.
Put the photograph up. You see the green line coming down there? To start with, on this project, there was no bridge on 10th Street at all. There wasn't anything there. In fact, in that picture there that you show, there's anything on that picture there, it wasn't there in 1929, which I have the D's to show you on the property since 1929. So that shows there was no bridges, no nothing there. So that green line comes all the way from Industrial Park, all the way down through Bel Air Edition. The Bel Air Edition built those houses, as you can see up there on that section.
What is, which is the green line, Mr. Brett?
Well, there's the green line there, and there's an orange mark right down the way there a little bit.
Okay, here, I see the orange mark.
Okay, that's the orange mark. Now, that orange mark shows where that drainage did stop, which was 27 feet wide and 10 feet high. And that wasn't even enough. They had to come out and add on the north side, add three more layers of concrete blocks in order to keep from flooding that Victoria thing that was flooding. From there on, that enters into a little six-foot dirt creek, which that all used to be, which was Williams Creek. It used to be a little six-foot dirt creek. So that 35-foot of water, 10-foot high, is dumped into there, and then comes into our property. Now, you can show those two pictures. You can see that's where the creek bed is. And up on that one ledge there, you can see where they had the three foot.
Are you referring to one picture or the other? So everybody understands what?
Well, that's where that orange mark was at, and that's where it ends at. The creek, that's just both sides.
Okay, so that's looking both directions from the bridge?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So you can see the concrete blocks on the other side. Now, whenever they built, they built that tract in stages. And by building it in stages, they added more water to come into that creek behind that, which was, well, the reason it's that way is because the water keeps draining down Victoria, and it was flooding out some of the houses on Victoria. That's the reason they had to add the three-foot of concrete box on there, so it wouldn't back up into that, because they were putting too much water into it from into the part in front of the foundation. So you can put number two in there now. Now, that shows the street, that shows how wide it is, six-foot on the city side. Both of those, that's two different dates that we're taking at, and you can see the creek coming there with a load of water, and they're six-foot wide.
So there's five years difference between those pictures? The picture on the left's from all three, and the picture on the right's from all eight?
Yeah, and they're both the same. They're still six-foot wide on that side. Now, you can go to number three, yes. Now, that shows my side, which is 40-foot wide, that's only 29-foot apart. So that shows you how much water that you're putting into my property, that's eroding the banks and eroding everything in that respect. And it's continuing to do it today, and you've even added the other thing. Now, you can put the west side, number four up.
So, Mr. Brett, to just help make sure we keep the, the side that you showed that was opposite side of the bridge from your side?
Six-foot.
And so, but that is all concreted in, or bagwalled?
No, it's just dirt. On your side of that creek, it's only dirt.
Okay.
And it's not being washed out, because the time it gets down there, you have the bridge that blocks the water from going through, and it forms like a fire hose that you'd be forced to wash it through.
Okay, so it's coming from your property? The water's coming from your side?
Coming from, it comes from your side.
Okay, all right.
The one downhill.
Okay, so the bridge stops the flow?
The bridge stops the flow of the water to a certain degree. That was only an eight-foot bridge.
Okay.
And that bridge was put in there about 1931, the one that's eight-foot, because the State Department got an easement on our piece of property for construction, easy to build 404-38. So when they put that in there, you couldn't use 404-38, so they had to have a way to get around our property, and go up that way. So that little bridge was put in there at that time.
Okay.
So that had to come around to the other part of the road.
So since that time, that has changed from six-foot on one side of that bridge to 29 feet, 40 feet on your side?
Yes.
All right, great. I just want to determine the significance of each one of these photos and each point you're making along the way, so we all stay with you.
Now, the next one, you can put the other map up. No, that's the old, that's the one you had up before. There's another one there.
Yeah, that's.
That's the second map. Did you want this one again?
Well, no, but you can leave that one up there then. During this time, you built Shell Road from 3rd Street, from 1st Street to 3rd Street. And you built a new building on the, where the cemetery is. All of that added additional water to that creek. You can put, there's pictures for, you can put up number four pictures. See, the new drainage, you put it in there, and the water coming through it, die into that creek that runs into the property down there. And that shows two different, now, there's some more pictures there besides that.
That's a new bridge there?
That's the new bridge where Shell Avenue comes across that.
Do you know what the timeframe on that bridge is? Do you remember?
Well, that's been within the last year, year and a half.
Okay, so that's a brand-new bridge?
That's a new.
Okay.
About there by Miller Park in.
Miller Park, yes. So that's the, that shows where, in order to protect your property, they came in there and dug it out, and put in a seven-foot base in it, concrete for 250 feet, plus you put the sidewalks in. See the sidewalks down on the side, and you see the concrete?
The back walls, uh-huh.
So you put the side, so you throw more water into my property by doing that. I'm trying to show that it's been happening in stages all the time. And that shows the street there that's been built, that's Shell Avenue between 3rd Street and the other street, which also has a sidewalk, which allows the water to come down the sidewalk close to the street, which enters into that drainage. Right there, you have that. You can show the number five now. Now, you just completed these. These are the new sidewalks you put in for the walking trails. The other picture showed where each one of them came out of that big ditch, but I've got a lot of pictures of the park itself, so you can see where they're at. Some of them end at the main street, where the bridge is there, where people come in at that area. Part of them end at the spillway that goes down into the creek, and all of them join together on a downward trend, which adds additional amount of water to that. Number three, there should be some pictures there from number three that shows the erosion. And there it's come. Now, see? That's the erosion, how wide it is down in the creek. There's some more pictures there, there's those.
Through your property?
Yes, through our property. That's what, that's the results of where the cheese has been washed down, the sides of the walls have been washed down, and that's the cheese as it came down. It shows you there. And that's right where the bridge is there. Those two are right where the bridge is, and you can see where the, if you look at the side, that side, you see where all of it's been washed out on the sides, all the way down. And that's all the way through the property that's doing that. You can show number six now. Now, this is the remedy where I signed things to allow you to go in there and put, I thought it was going to be the concrete, that you put rocks in there. The other one, where it's gone, the rock work, the work just started. Okay, that's when you started doing the rock work and started putting it in there. Those others shows when they had that heavy rain here, those rocks washed down, off of the banks and washed back down into the creek bed, and took the dirt with it. And according to this here, it says, "Easement purpose to improve the maintenance drainage channel across Gahanis property," which it was supposed to improve it. It didn't improve it, I assure you. It's twice as bad as it was before. So what I don't understand is, actually, it was a disaster. You can see all the debris and stuff in there, and all those rocks now, things are hanging over that floods out of the park and so forth, they're hanging up in the bricks and stuff like that. So it seems to me like you're going to have to take all that rock out now, and find some other way to eliminate the damage that's been done to our property.
So what is your request of us? What are you looking to accomplish?
My request is to find a remedy for what has been created by the cities and the planning commission and so forth of not requiring the people that were doing the building to adhere to the laws from downstream, the damage to people downstream, which this is done.
But what is it, what are you asking for us to do for you?
What else?
I mean, besides just?
I noticed in this last thing, you've got $4,000, $4 million and some dollars to put in a $3,800 Elm Creek detention pond, with no detention pond to put in to protect my property, but yet you're spending $3,000, $3 million and some dollars now to put in detention ponds for this area. It seems to me like that something should be able to come up and should do something to fix our property, protect our property, which has been damaged through the actions of the pharmaceutical commission, some of it from your actions, because you passed Miller Park, the sidewalks. In fact, if I remember correctly, they tried to get you to put in the sidewalks, that that stuff would just penetrate through, and you wouldn't have it solid. You didn't do it that way. It runs on now. So what I'm trying to say is, it's been a long time, 1949, we go in that property, so I can tell you everything that happened to it. And that used to only be a little three-foot stream. The reason they put that road around, whenever they put that bridge in, there were just mules and wagons and stuff like that, that were allowed to get back there and get on the old toy road, because you couldn't get down 404-38, because they were building on it. So that's all I have to say, I'll show you what's taking place.
Thank you for bringing that to us and giving us that explanation and showing us that history.
Anything you want to know about, from 1949, I can fill you in for sure.
Thank you, sir. Comments or questions from the council, from Mr. Brett? Thank you, sir. Next item on the agenda is an opportunity for public comment. Citizens who desire to address the council on any matter may sign up to do so prior to the meeting. Public comments will be received during this portion of the meeting. Please limit your comments to three minutes. No discussion or final action will be taken by the city council. Two individuals signed up. Mr. Workman, if you don't mind, what we'll do is, we'll give you an opportunity to comment, and that way we can dialogue with you, ask you questions in that, on that agenda item. Okay? It's not a public hearing, but since you're, propose one of the contracts up for consideration, then we can do that. So if that's okay with you, we'll wait till then. Thank you, sir. Next, Mr. Justice Bigby.
Good evening, there.
Hello, sir, how are you?
Thank you. I appreciate this opportunity to speak to the council and to the people assembled here. You'll notice that we have posted, my concern has to do with waste management.
If you'd just state your name and address for the record for us, please, sir.
I'm Justice Bigby, and that's a name, not a title. I'm not a judge, I'm not a legal official. I live at 108 Sundance Strives, Temple, Texas.
Thank you, sir.
I have, for the last two years, I bought a new house in July of 2006, and so I only post, posted the 2007 and 2008, but down at the bottom, you see some 2006 information from the few months I lived there in 2006. I just want you guys to, and ladies and everyone, to consider, maybe we ought to take a look at how we set these fees, because there's been a quantum leap in what they are. And my water usage has been pretty much the same. I had one month where I had a problem with the pipe from the meter to the house, and which was my responsibility, and I took care of it. But otherwise, it's hard for me to understand, if we use January $9.30 waste water fee of $9.30 as a base, then you look at the others and you compare them, if you go straight across, 12 months later, it's a 202% increase. And then you come on down to April, that's when I had the problem with the, with the pipe. And you jump across from there, it's, naturally, it falls back. But then, in May, we start as a base, $1,877, May of 2007, and then you jump across, and it's $49.07. Wow, that is, if you're still using the base of $9.30, that's a 528% increase, and you know, I know the cost of living's going up, folks, but that's, that's, that's a gigantic leap. So I was just, I know you don't have, you couldn't do it right now, but I want to tell you, Temple is a wonderful place to live. I love living here, and it, I feel comfortable and safe with the fire department, the police department, and you do a good job. But on this, I'm starting to get nervous, because I'm 71 years old, and I said, gosh, man, I hope I can, you know, if I live a long life, I hope I can afford to pay my waste management fee without Tony coming down there and telling me, hey, Mr. Bigby, you're in arrears, I'm going to have to kick you out. So, I know I'm, it's levity, but doggone it. Doesn't that seem like that's a bit much for an increase? And that's all. I thank you for listening to me, and I had to get this off my chest. I've been complaining, my wife says, well, why don't you go down there? You know how women are. They cut the chase right away. Hey, go down there and tell them.
You're going to get us in trouble now, sir.
Mayor, you got, you got a wonderful group of people, and you do a great job, and I'm proud of Temple, Texas. But if there's any way you guys look at that and you ingest these things, I'll sure feel better. I'll sleep better. And thank you very much, I hope I didn't go over my two minutes.
Just right under it. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it, Mr. Brett. Next item on the, on our agenda is the consent agenda. All items listed in this section, consent are considered to be routine by the city council and may be enacted by one motion. If discussion is desired by the council, any item may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any council member, and will be considered separately. This is item 4A through J. Council, are there any of the items on consent you wish to have removed? I'm going to remove item I for individual consideration. Anything else?
Can I like before J, please?
Item J. Other items? If not, entertain a motion for consideration of 4A through H on the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda, with the exception of items I and J.
We have a motion as your second.
Second.
Further discussion? Adam Secretary?
Counselor Jeter.
Aye.
Counselor Janzak.
Aye.
Mayor Prochey.
Aye.
Mayor Jones.
Aye. Item 4I, consider adopting a resolution ordering a local option election for May the 9th, 2009, where voters to consider whether to allow the Temple Health and Bioscience Economic Development District to impose an ad valorem tax not to exceed 15 cents for $100 valuation of all taxable property in the district, and issue bonds payable in whole or part from the ad valorem tax. Mr. Blackwell, if you could bring a comment about that? I think we have some question in the workshop that.
Sure, Mayor, I'd be happy to. As council may recall, the Temple Health and Bioscience Economic Development District was created by special legislation in 2005. That legislation that created the district did not by the district, with any taxing authority. However, the legislation did identify the process by which that taxing authority could be considered and authorized by the district, and that process was for a petition to be filed with the city, and that starts a formal process. The petition that we have received with the city secretary's office on November 3rd contained appropriate and a valid number of signatures, as has been certified, and really what the city is doing at this point is simply processing that application, bringing it to, the petition, bringing it to the council for consideration, and then setting the date for that election, which would be May 9th, 2009. And again, all of this is in accordance with the legislation that was created, the Bioscience District, that also set forth the process for considering an election, to consider the authority to impose an ad valorem property tax. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any additional questions, or Mr. Graham can address any legal issues, and Ms. Hansmeyer can also address any issues associated with the city secretary's office.
Thank you, sir. Council questions or comments you want to make in this item? If not, entertain a motion for item 4I.
Motion to approve item 4I.
Second.
Motion is second for the approval of item 4I relating to the election on May the 9th of 2009. Madam Secretary?
Counselor Jeter.
Aye.
Counselor Janzak.
Aye.
Mayor Prochey.
Aye.
Mayor Jones.
Aye. Item 4J is consider adopting a resolution authorizing a budget amendment for the fiscal year 2008, 2009. Mr. Jeter, was there a particular item you wanted to highlight or a question you wanted to ask?
You know, we'll go ahead and, I was wanting to talk about the airport, but we'll go ahead and deal with that. On the airport, the question, we're talking about the budget amendment, I just want everybody to understand that the dollars, the bulk of those dollars were appropriating, were approved by, this council or previous councils, and we're only talking about not a whole lot of new dollars coming. That's the main thing I had a question about, I just want to clarify for everybody.
Correct. And I don't believe this, it's not taken through the budget amendment, and it's actioning at the item itself, and that amount is $7,105 of new money to apply to that grant match.
So the main thing is, is that we are not appropriating a tremendous amount of new money, those, everybody, the question was, are y'all, you know, you're spending additional new dollars, so it's only that $7,000 is coming out of current dollars, and everything else has been appropriated. That was all I wanted for everybody to get on the record for being able to see.
Okay, yes, that is correct.
Thank you, Mr. Jeter. Other comments or questions? If not, entertain a motion on item 4J.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second for the approval of the budget amendments as proposed under 4J. If there's no further discussion or questions, Madam Secretary?
Counselor Jeter.
Aye.
Counselor Janzak.
Aye.
Mayor Prochey.
Aye.
Counselor Jones.
Aye. Under the regular agenda, item 5, consider adopting a resolution authorizing a construction contract with Workman Commercial Construction of Austin for the construction of an indoor swimming pool in Salmon's Community Park in the amount of $1,543,183, which is correct.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Proud to bring this project forward to you. It is one of our park bond projects, and in fact, it's the last park bond project that we're having to bid, so that makes me feel very good. It is to consider building an indoor therapeutic pool to be built at Salmon's Park next to the senior center. The pool will feature, what you can see on the chart there, heated swimming pool, 75 feet or 25 yards long, four swimming lanes, a depth of 3 and 1/2 to 6 feet, be several ways to enter the pool, and that's important, because the primary purpose will be therapeutic use. The rest of the building will house the typical stuff that comes with a pool, lobby areas, pool storage, filter room, and office. This pool is not going to be a typical swimming pool, although we're going to try to use it for all age groups and multiple programming. But again, the primary purpose was for therapeutic. We've had a lot of seniors use the pool at Temple College, and we're losing that pool in this pool project came about, so we're building it primarily for that purpose, but we think we'll be able to throw pool parties in there, do swimming lessons throughout the year, to be year-round operations, it's a great pool. This is a diagram and a picture of what it'll look like when built. The swimming pool was designed by Kimley Horn Associates Associates of Dallas, and they're very well-known and respected in the industry, and they also designed the pool we're building at South Temple Park, the Lyons Junction Family Center. And we do have Mark Hatchell here and Adam Brewster from Kimley Horn, if questions want to be asked, later to them. Kimley Horn developed the package for bidding purposes, that was comprised of a base bid and three alternates, two alternates or add alternates for a 10-car parking area to add to the parking that's already there, we feel that some additional parking would be good, and an ultraviolet water treatment system. There's also one deductive alternate, and that was to replace the metal roof with a shingle roof, if the bids didn't come in where we would like them to come in. Bids were opened on November 18th, with seven bidders responding, and the bids ranged from a low of $1,553,183,000 to a high of $1,664,940, with the base bid and the two add alternates, which we're going to recommend. The low bid was $1,553,183,000, was submitted by Workman Commercial Construction of Austin, Texas. As we had not done work previously with Workman Commercial Construction, we asked Kimley Horn to conduct the background reference check for us, and they did, and they stated that Workman's relevant experience includes two pool projects for them, for the city of Saginaw, Texas, and North Richland Hills, Texas. They performed in an acceptable manner on both these projects, are familiar with the scheduling of this type of work. Workman has indicated that if awarded the bid, they plan on utilizing bid, they plan on utilizing Temple-based subcontractors whenever possible and to purchase supplies in Temple, from Temple businesses. The second low bidder was Chaney Cox, and they're located in Temple. Their bid, base bid and the two add alternates and the one deduct exceeds the low bid by forty thousand, three hundred and seventy-three dollars, which is two point six percent higher than the low bid. The city of Temple has the ability to award the work to a local contractor if the bid is within five percent of the low bid through local preference legislation, which is adopted by the state of Texas and the city of Temple. We are recommending that you award the, the base bid and alternates one and two, and reject the deductive alternate for a total of one million, five hundred and fifty-three thousand, one hundred and eighty-three dollars to Workman Commercial Construction. And glad to answer any questions. Madam Mayor.
Council questions, please. Thank you, sir. Don't go too far away. We may have to call you back up here if we get into some issues with the contractors. I know Mr. Workman had signed up to speak, and certainly you'd like to come up and make any comments. I don't know if there's a representative from Chaney Cox here as well that we can, okay, great, that we can answer questions for the council, so.
Thank you, Mayor, and the council.
Thank you for being.
Again, my name's Kyle Workman. I'm the president and CEO of Workman Commercial Construction. We are a Austin-based general contractor with offices in, in Houston as well as Arlington, Texas. We specialize in a lot of different things. One of the ones we happen to do is we specialize in pools. And so we're, we're excited about the opportunity to, to perform on this project for you. We feel like we provided a very competitive price, and I'm more than willing to answer any questions you have with me.
And I know you've supplied information to us, answered questions for us that have been presented. We appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
Have you done any other projects in Temple, Texas?
Uh, it's been a while. Been about seven or eight years. I did a Walgreens here.
I was thinking you did the Walgreens on South Fifty-first Street, didn't you?
Oh, is that across from the mall?
Yes, close to it.
Yes, sir.
On the list of contractors that, that you've provided, would, would you have any problem having this list, although there is one mistake we could talk about in terms of where one is located, but would, would you have any problem with having this list included in the, the motion to approve you, whereas this list would be that you would use these folks that you have said you are planning on using?
Uh, I don't believe so. I think, I think we did make clear in our, in our presentation that there was some concern particularly about Aspen Air's number from the standpoint of the dehumidification unit. Now, just something I need to verify.
Well, yeah, you, you actually had them as local and from Temple, and they're, they're actually from Belton, but.
Okay. Well, I apologize.
Oh, no, not a problem. But obviously, my question is, and, and, you know, and I guess this is for discussion for us after we visit with both companies, but, you know, this local preference thing has a lot of, there's a lot of things that need to be hashed out about it. Now, in my six and a half years on the council, I have lost track of the number of times I, people have talked with me that, that, about firms claiming to be local that have just opened an office up here. Not implying either that, that the local one in this case has, but there's also issues related with how that all works. And so, Mayor, I'd like to maybe pick that up after we visit with, with both of the contractors, if anybody wants to visit with them both. So that's my only question for, for Mr. Workman.
Okay. Other questions for Mr. Workman? Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Collins?
Comments?
Me?
Yeah, was there?
No, I heard comments from Chaney Cox.
I mean, if y'all have any questions, maybe you like.
Okay, great. Other questions?
My question would be the same question, Mr. Workman.
Come forward, please.
Thanks, thanks, sir.
Good afternoon. How are y'all?
How are you, sir?
Um, if, if this local preference provision were, I guess, invoked or whatever, would, would you have a problem with this list of subs that you submitted being introduced into that so that there is a, an element of accountability to using the local subs that you say that you're going to use?
We would not have a problem whatsoever.
Thank you.
Okay. Do you think?
Any other question?
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Appreciate you being here. Thank you. Other comments or questions?
I, I think maybe this would warrant a workshop in, in the near future, especially since we've got some significant projects. You know, we've got a very large fire station coming and, and other things, and, and this scenario could end up being significant amount of dollars with, with some of the size of, of those. And, and some of the issues that give me a little pause with this in terms of, you know, what do we define as local? Can somebody just open up an office here in town and be considered local? Can, the, you know, what do we consider local economy is, if, if, is it, or the, a lot of times, we may have an out-of-town contractor that may be using more local subs than a local contractor. In those scenarios, I think we need to think through and have some type of, maybe we just take them individually. I don't know. But the concern is, once we set a precedent and move into this, it's kind of, what do you do going back and forward when you have, when it's not forty thousand and it's three hundred thousand or, or five hundred thousand or whatever it is? That, that's my main concern. The other thing is, you know, what, what happens if you have a few of these in a year, and all of a sudden it's a million dollars? And, and those are just things that, that give me a little bit of concern. So I, I would like to request that we maybe, when we pass this thing, it didn't even, I didn't even think through the scenarios in the sense of what might, we might face and how that might happen. But I, I would like to request that, that we set up a workshop and that we kind of discuss this and maybe incorporate some, when this provision, when we, when these situations come up, that the, the contractors need to present a list of subs and suppliers that they're using, and that we would include that in the thing so that, you know, I was told some, that they change all, they'll say they're using local ones, and then they may not, and so that we can make sure that the dollars are actually providing not just a benefit to the company that is owned locally, but also that those dollars are benefiting a local economy with local vendors and local suppliers and subs and stuff. So that would be a, does anybody have any thoughts on that? Or can we maybe schedule a workshop in the near future before those other projects go out to bid to discuss that?
Any council can always, because of workshops, so, you know, so I, if you want to do that, then sure, absolutely. We'll, we'll set that up and do that. So, you know, we just recently expanded, like earlier this year, I think it was, we expanded the, the range, the percentage from three to five percent, and we expanded from wheeled vehicles, which was what we had previously been limited to through council ordinance for consideration of the local preference to professional services. And so that changed this to where this project qualified, and it wouldn't have in the past. And so, you know, there's been much discussion over the last seven years that I'm aware of, and, and many items have been called out, pulled from consent, and, and looked at for the purpose of, you know, questioning, awarding bids to firms that were outside our community. Or in the case of the question that you bring up now, and, and you brought it up before, it was asked before, whether it was you or others, about whether a company is a local company or not just because they've got an office here in Temple. And so. Well, when this is, this is gut check time. This is, you know, are we gonna give work to local contractors? And, and then, yes, it is stickier because who's doing more business with the local, local contractors? The out-of-town contractor or the in-town contractor? And so.
I think that matters moving forward when we get into, you know, today is today, but moving forward, if we can collectively discuss that, is you could have a scenario where a general contractor may be local, but his entire list of subs may not be, whereas your out-of-town person may be. And I think one of the residual benefits that we, if we, if we do this, is that when people bid jobs, they, they, contractors are bidding jobs, whether it be, I guess, our community or the communities, that they're working, and that's the backfire as well, where you end up with a situation where everybody will only use their folks. And I've also been, had people say that that's a slippery slope the other direction. What happened, if Temple starts doing this and all the other communities start doing that. So that, that's.
The other thing is, if you look at the, the list that Mr. Workman provided for us, and, and there were a number of items that say no local bidder.
Sure.
And yet, we can say, but I know a company that does that kind of work here in Temple. Why didn't they bid? I know we have tabled bids in the past and asked for bids to be rejected to, to be able to investigate, to find out, why didn't any of our local contractors bid on an item? And, you know, so are we gonna get into that with, with contractors as well and make them go out to bid again after they do the work and submit a bid, they win the award, that why didn't you use this local contractor? Or why didn't he know about it? And why didn't he bid? And somebody out of town did bid. And so is that what we're gonna set up and start to, to require or, or cause to happen? And I don't know why local contractors don't bid on some of these things. And that's what we're trying to do, and I don't think it's a matter of whether our local contractor or an out-of-town contractor was able to get a Temple bidder to bid on a project or not. I don't know what the reasoning is behind our local contractors not wanting to do that. So is that what we're trying to establish as well? It's a tough issue. No doubt about it.
Mr. Mayor, I guess I would comment that I'm convinced in my mind that in either case of whoever we would pick to do this project, that both are, these are reputable companies, and both have the technical expertise and the managerial experience that can bring the project in and, and do it right. What we're really talking about here is microeconomics and the issue of keeping, causing the money to circulate within our own community. The state legislature some years ago approved the three percent. We, we, the city of Temple conformed to that of, that you could allow local preference optional. And so really, you could argue that if, they didn't do that for Temple, Texas. They did it for the state of Texas. And so other communities were offered that opportunity because somebody thought that that was worthwhile. Further, not too long ago, they said, okay, you can increase it to five. The city of Temple followed suit and increased it from three percent to five percent that would be allowed for a, a local preference option. And so obviously, to me, there's, uh, there is concern, I think, on the state level that if cities choose to do that, that they've been given quite a bit of leeway of that authority to, to purchase, to enter purchase agreements to do that, to provide, to offer those kind of economic incentives for their own community.
I don't disagree with anything Maury said. I, I just think we have a fiduciary responsibility to the taxpayers to, to not just do it because we can, which I know you're not advocating, but also to look at the details, to figure out how do we make sure those dollars, those extra dollars, those taxpayer dollars bring the greatest residual bang for the buck to the community. You know, we, the more local subs, the more local suppliers that, that are used with those dollars, then it's an investment that has, it, it has a significant return on investment as the money cycles. I, I don't disagree. I just, I, I, maybe we can have some more discussion at that workshop, and I guess we can go ahead and do this deal.
If being the case, if there's no further discussion, questions, comments, then we have a resolution and a recommendation from staff to award this bid for one million, five hundred and fifty-three thousand, one hundred and eighty-three dollars to Workman Commercial Construction. Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we invoke the local preference option and consider giving this bid to the local bidder, Chaney Cox Construction.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to award the bid for the indoor swimming pool to Chaney Cox Construction, and that would be in the amount of one million, five hundred and ninety-three thousand, five hundred and fifty-six dollars. The second highest bidder, but within the local preference discretion that we have as a city council. Is there further discussion?
I'd like to make a statement. Again, both companies are exceedingly well-qualified. And I think it's important to note here that Workman Construction Company is a well-known, two-generation family business that is well-positioned in the marketplace and does a fine job. And in no way does this impugn any of their abilities to do the work. In my mind, it is purely a case of microeconomics, and I think it's, in my mind, again, speaking for myself, a wise use of taxpayer dollars to keep the dollar amount within Temple, Texas.
Thank you, Mr. Jeter. Other comments, questions? Now, we have a motion, a second, to approve Chaney Cox, the award on this project. Madam Secretary?
Councilmember Jeter?
Aye.
Councilmember Janzak?
Aye.
Mayor Prochimluna?
Aye.
Councilmember Schneider?
Yes, sir.
Mayor Jones?
Aye. Thanks to both of you for being here. Appreciate your work and effort on behalf of the city of Temple. Item six is a third reading on a public hearing to consider adopting an ordinance renewing the franchise agreement with Atmos Energy Corporation. Mr. Grant?
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. This is the third reading of a franchise ordinance with Atmos Energy Corporation. They currently have a gas franchise within the city limits that is expiring in January of next year. This is the franchise that they assume from Lone Star Gas. We are proposing renewal of that franchise agreement under the terms of our charter. We can do so in fifteen years. That's what we're proposing. We have complied with the charter in terms of advertising in the newspaper a summary of the conditions and terms of the franchise agreement. The agreement is substantially similar to the current agreement. They're still proposing the same consideration for the use of right-of-ways at four percent. Really, the only significant change to the ordinance, the current one, are the dates, the term at fifteen years. And under the current franchise, they are paying us annually in arrears, and we're proposing under the new one that they pay us quarterly, so we get our money a little sooner. Otherwise, the agreement is similar. This does require a public hearing tonight. The applicant has requested some additional time to allow their attorneys to review this language that we're proposing for the payment, and has asked that we table final consideration of the ordinance until the next meeting. And that is my recommendation to you. After you conduct your public hearing, I suggest that if you conduct a public hearing, that you leave that open until the next meeting and be early and inclined to table the item. Glad to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Graham. Council questions on this item, if not, this item is posted for a public hearing, and I'll declare the public hearing open at this time. Anyone wishing to speak to the council on this item, please come forward and state your name and address for the record prior to making your comments. Seeing no one wishing to speak, I'll declare the public hearing suspended if it is the council's wishes to table this item, and I'll entertain a motion on this item.
Motion to table this item until the December eighteenth meeting.
Second.
That motion is second for tabling, and so the public hearing is suspended. If there's no further discussion, Madam Secretary?
Councilmember Jeter?
Aye.
Councilmember Janzak?
Aye.
Mayor Prochimluna?
Aye.
Councilmember Schneider?
Aye.
Item seven, second reading in a public hearing, consider adopting an ordinance authorizing an amendment to the Choices oh-eight comprehensive plan to reflect moderate density residential uses on twenty-one and a half acres situated in the George Given survey, abstract number three forty-five, with platted land recorded as Bird Creek Valley six and Bird Creek Valley Phase Four, Plexus Phase Three. Mr. Doherty?
Again, Mayor and City Council, you had considered this item in a public hearing at your last meeting, the second public hearing, and I'll go through it quickly for the presentation. This shows the aerial photograph for the property behind I thirty-five. Essentially, it's a suburban residential use for the Conference of Plan Amendment, allows single-family uses only, and this area does contain some soil that contains some settling and a fault. Some of the pictures around the area show Battle Drive, Bird Creek, some of the adjacent houses, and this proximity within Interstate thirty-five. The suburban residential use for the Conference of Plan is for mid-sized, single-family lots only. It will allow a greater separation between dwellings and more emphasis on green space versus the streets and driveways typical of the auto-urban setting. Your lot sizes may be reduced, so the corresponding increases in open space would maintain a suburban character. You could consider, if a development came forward, that smaller lots would require development clustering to achieve those densities. This is the property is shown on the current Conference of Land Use Plan, Future Land Use Plan, showing it's a combination of some commercial and, and suburban retail areas. If the Plan Amendment is adopted on your second reading this evening, it would show the moderate density residential in that area. The Conference of Plan is reminded to the council, it is not zoning. It is zoning from the districts being established in our ordinance states. It is zoning from the districts being established in our ordinance states that the zoning in Temple is to achieve compatible land uses arrangements in implementing our comprehensive plan. The, again, the property in this area includes, some areas are already zoned, commercial, general retail, and multiple family. The land use charts will remain unchanged. The land use charts will allow duplexes for all of these three districts. And as the council is aware, we're moving forward in a work program as part of our new fiscal year to update our land use charts and look at eliminating some of these residential uses from these non-residential districts to try to modify some of the land uses in this area. As you can see from the land, the zoning chart, that the single-family or duplexes would be allowed in those zoning districts as explained. The area up to the north or the upper right area of your slide shows that it's already zoned, single-family attached, which would not allow duplexes. So both the council's staff recommendation from your first reading would be to amend the land use plan for suburban residential uses in this area. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Comments or questions on this item? First reading did not have the public hearing associated with it, so on this second reading we'll have the public hearing. Anyone wishing to state, speaking to the council on this item, please come forward and state your name and address for the record prior to making your comment. Seeing no one wishing to speak, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Council, your pleasure on the second reading. Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion, a second. Further questions? There being none, Madam Secretary.
Councilmember Jeter.
Aye.
Councilmember Janzak.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Lina.
Aye.
Councilmember Schneider.
Aye.
Mayor Jones.
Aye. Item eight, this first reading and a public hearing to consider adopting an ordinance authorizing a zoning change from general retail district to two-family district on approximately 15.6 acres of land situated partly in the R.M. Williamson survey abstract number 905 and partly in the George Given survey abstract number 345 located along the north side of 205 Loop east of Duke and Turley Drives. Mr. Mavri.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This proposed zone change is for a two-family subdivision that's proposed for the property. The Planning and Zoning Commission approved the preliminary plat for this development on November 17th of this year, conditioned upon the approval of this zoning request. The request is city-initiated and one of the reasons for that is that although two-family dwellings are allowed in the GR zoning district, one of the recommendations of the comprehensive plan is to modernize our use table that's in the zoning ordinance that shows what kinds of uses are permitted in which zoning districts in the town. And due to the cumulative effect of the zoning, of the permitted uses in the zoning district, you have residential uses that are permitted in non-residential zoning districts. So this, this requested zone change would match the zoning to what is proposed for the property, which is the two-family, two-family subdivision. But again, two-family dwellings are already allowed in the existing general retail district. If the use table is amended so that non-residential uses are no longer allowed, or so that residential uses are no longer allowed in GR and this project were built, then you could have the effect of a non-conforming subdivision, basically, that would, could pose problems if someone wanted to expand on one of the duplexes that were, that were then built. This is an aerial for the property that you see on the screen. I'll show some on-the-ground pictures in this. It's on 205 Loop, which sort of connects in a roundabout way the HK Dodge and Loop with Adams 2305. There's a contractor supply store across from 205 Loop that you see on the upper-left corner of the screen. Then on the lower-right, there's the West Ridge 9 subdivision that's just to the east of the property. There are some existing two-family or duplex dwellings in the vicinity and those are shown here. There are seven lots, which would equal 14 units, and that's just to the west. And I'll show a zoning map that'll show where those are located in a second. This is the future land use and character map from the new comprehensive plan. Right now, this property is designated as Business Park. We will propose amending the future land use map on a, in a more comprehensive way on a biennial basis and we would, at that time, propose that it be amended to show the orange or the auto-urban residential for this property to act as a buffer between what we propose as non-residential activity here along Airport and the Loop and between the predominantly single-family uses here to the west. The request, the zoning request complies with the thoroughfare plan and there are, as the property is platted, adequate public facilities such as water and wastewater serving the property. This is kind of a combination of the zoning map and of showing you the responses to the public notification that was sent out. You can see, first to address the, what the zoning is in the vicinity of the property. This is the small two-family development here on 205 that I showed the pictures of earlier. Then you have single-family 2 and 3 to the west. You have Light Industrial where the contractor store is. There's a commercial zoning designation here that's vacant and commercial designation along the Loop on both sides. There were eight notices mailed out for the Planning and Zoning Commission hearing. Two were sent in in agreement with the proposal and two responded disagreeing with the proposal. This shows the development standards for the two-family zoning district. 4,000 square foot minimum lot size, 60-foot minimum lot width, and then 2 and 1/2-foot front story maximum height. Then the setbacks are shown for the front, side, and rear setbacks for the two-family district. At its November 17th meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted 8 to 0 for approval of the zone change. There was one commissioner who was absent. The Planning and Zoning Commission's staff recommendation is to approve the zone change from general retail to 2F, two-family, due to the reasons shown on the screen, which are that the requested district allows the same uses as the existing district but prohibits some potentially incompatible non-residential uses. Also, number two, the placement of the district complies with the purpose statement of the zoning district, which is to act as a transition between the non-residential proposed activity or planned activity on the Loop and the single-family to the west. The request complies with the thoroughfare plan and adequate public facilities will serve the property as it is platted. And at this point, I could answer any questions that the council might have on this case.
Thank you, Mr. Mavri. Council? Page on this item. This item's posted for a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak before the council, please come forward and state your name and address for the record prior to your comments. I declare the public hearing open. Seeing no one wishing to speak, I'll declare the public hearing closed. The council?
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, for approval of the zoning change requested by staff. Go to the question, Madam Secretary.
Councilmember Jeter.
Aye.
Councilmember Janzak.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Lina.
Aye.
Councilmember Schneider.
Aye.
Mayor Jones.
Aye. Item nine, first reading, public hearing to consider adopting an ordinance authorizing a zoning change from Office 1 district to Single Family 1 district on approximately 25 acres of land on the west side of Kegley Road south of Wildflower Lane. Mr. Mavri.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a very similar zoning case. It has the same landowner and the same developer. It's, the request is to go from Office 1 to Single Family 1 to accommodate a single-family proposed subdivision. Again, the Planning and Zoning Commission approved this one in plat on November 17th as well. In 2006 and 2007, the property was zoned from agricultural to Office 1, but nothing was ever built there. This zone change is, again, city-initiated for the single-family subdivision that has been the plat for which, the preliminary plat for which has been approved. The same reasoning is behind this as well, due to the modernization recommendation in the comprehensive plan to make a single-family and other types of residential subdivisions be built in actual residential zoning districts. And for both of these, there hasn't been objection from the landowner for this city-initiated zone change. Here's an aerial of the subject property. It's on Kegley Road across from the Wildflower subdivision. Some on-the-ground pictures, a view of Kegley Road and the, just the undeveloped, or across Kegley Road is the golf course, which is obscured by the trees that are growing there along the road. The plat that was approved, Planning and Zoning Commission, does have a widening of Kegley for the portion of the subdivision that, that it abuts. So there, there would be, as Kegley develops, more right-of-way for the widening of what is a fairly busy road. This is the future land use and character map from the comprehensive plan for the area. The designation for the entire area is suburban residential and this zoning request matches or is in compliance with, with that recommendation. It also is in compliance with the thoroughfare plan and with plating, the adequate public facilities serve the property as well. This is another combination of the zoning map and the notice map. The part of land and pieces of land in white are still zoned agricultural. The land across Wildflower is PD without really a base zoning district designation. One property owner of the seven that were mailed was in agreement with the zone change and none were in disagreement. This shows the standards for, the development standards for the Single Family 1 district. Basically, you have a 7,500 square foot lot with 75 feet in width and a 25-foot front At the November 17th meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted 8 to 0 for approval of the, of the zone change. Again, one of the commissioners was absent. The, the approval is based on the reasons that the, the request complies with the future land use and character map, with the thoroughfare plan, and that adequate public facilities will serve the property. And I could answer any questions on this case if the council has any.
Thank you, Mr. Mavri. This item's posted for a public hearing. I'll declare the public hearing open at this time. Anyone wishing to speak before the council on this item, please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
Honorable Mayor and City Commissioner, my name is Gopal Guticona. I'm the owner of this property. At this time, we are not quite sure what the potential for a development of this property. We would like to leave the zoning the way it is because fiscally, we are not quite sure what can be done with this property at this time. I would like to leave the zoning the way it is. Officer, thank you.
So, Dr. Guticona, what's recommended here by staff, you would rather not do what staff is recommending at this time?
That, that is correct, sir. This is a city initiative changing in the zoning. We can do what we, what we need to do under the existing zoning. We do not have any final understanding with this city, what can be done in, on this property. At this given time, I would like to leave it as it is. Zoning unchanged.
Anything else? Dr. Guticona?
Thank you. Some point in time, we got to talk about what we're going to do with Kegley.
Yep.
Happens out, and that's what my concern is going to be with dumping more traffic on Kegley, sir.
I hope they had a rec, I mean, they have a remedy for that as far as this particular property.
Right.
There's some questions, I think, is what I understand.
If it was going that other direction, there was, you know, I just, I mean, Kegley, move point now.
I got a sonic close now.
Maybe another workshop.
What brought this forward if the owner, property owner, did not?
Yeah, what's, what's the protocol here? What's, what's, we used to do?
Well, as the driver, I mean, they didn't check with the landowner to find out what his wishes were and we're just going to change it to residential and that would take them out of the ability to use it for Office 1.
There were, at the Planning and Zoning Commission meetings, there were public hearings for both, for this one and the previous case, just like here where...
Well, we brought it forward, the landowner didn't.
The city, right, the city initiated the zone change for the fact of the, having the zoning match what is proposed in the approved preliminary plat, which is a residential subdivision.
He was coming forward with a single-family residential subdivision and they were proposing and initiated the city, city-initiated to change the zoning to reflect what he was proposing.
So now, I think Dr. Guticona is maybe saying it may not be a residential subdivision.
We do not know. We have to look at fiscally what can be done there because of the, the demands from the city, of the financial resources from the property owner, it may not be feasible to do anything there.
Okay. But you, you had brought a plat forward on a single-family residential?
I did.
Oh, all right.
But I'm withdrawing that. At this time, I do not like, I object for any zoning change.
Okay. All right, correct.
Just, if I could ask for a point of clarification from Mr. Graham. If, will he have, if he decides to re-initiate the process, will he have to start again with planning and zoning? Or will it pick up at this point?
Well, I mean, it was a city-initiated, so, I mean, he probably would start. If he initiated zoning change, he comes back and he wants to do something, he would start up a P and Z.
I mean, that, that's a time factor that I want to make sure that you're aware of it.
Understand.
Of going back through the planning and zoning process.
I mean, with the existing zoning, we can do what we intend to do. If the city would, would make it appropriate, that's the reason they initiated this zoning change. That is my understanding.
Do you understand what you're saying? Because...
Yeah, in fact, he could do this under 01.
Sure. Well, I would add...
And then, and then you'd want to come back again with a city-initiated, you'd do the same thing that you're doing this time.
Yes, but the, the preliminary plat would then need to be amended, resubmitted, actually, because the setback for it is matching the single, single-family 1 front setback, at least, that's one thing. There could be others. I would need to review, review it further, but there is less of a setback on the front for houses, basically, in Office 1. So the preliminary plat would need some resubmital and some things adjusted on it.
Is that not true in this case, too? If, if this evidently is not an approved plat yet?
This is an approved preliminary plat.
Preliminary plat.
Right.
But a final plat.
A final plat.
It may have to be amended, just like you're saying anyways, correct?
Right. The preliminary plat would, would be resubmitted with whatever corrections would make it match the standards in Office 1 instead of single-family 1.
Thank you, Mr. Mavri.
If you tabled this item, would it, would it, would it eliminate him from going back through the P and Z process and, and the timeframe that you suggested earlier, Marty?
Well, I wouldn't suggest it. Typically, you're, you're going to bring it back. You've got a plan to bring it back. I would not.
Table in depth?
I would not.
Because I think he's been through this, been messing with this quite, quite a bit.
Yeah, almost.
A long time. And to start over from scratch.
He's saying he doesn't know what he wants to do with it.
No, it all depends upon how much it will cost. Because of the situation we are in, we do not know what the cost will be.
And we certainly don't want to, think we'd want to zone this and then he comes back and says he wants to do an office complex and we're going to change it back to 01.
I just, my concern was that he understood the implications of his request, that, yes, it's money that he's talking about, but it's also time expenditure. And that was my purpose in bringing it up.
I understand.
By the way, I understand why the city brought it forward, so I appreciate that fact, so...
One quick question for staff. And so this is an approved preliminary plat because it went through P and Z and there were no, they asked for no exceptions, is that correct?
Yes, sir, correct.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else wishing to address the council on this item? Seeing no one wishing to speak, I'll declare, no one else wishing to speak, the public hearing closed. Does this really require any action? Can we just leave it or do we just, there's a recommendation?
The council's will to, it's city-initiated, whether to, is there a motion, a second to prove it or if not, then it will die for life.
Yeah, okay.
So it doesn't require action.
Is there a motion on this item? There being no motion, that this item dies for a lack of... There being no motion, this item dies for lack of a motion. And so, we move on to item 10. First reading in a public hearing, consider adopting an ordinance authorizing a zoning change from multi-family two district to Office One district on the west 92 feet of Lot Two, Block Barnes Edition, located at 601 North Main Street. Mr. Baker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This property is, this zone change request is initiated by the property owner. The applicant wants to, or one of the tenants of this office building you see on the screen at French and First, or Main, I'm sorry, wants to erect a sign. However, a freestanding sign like such as he has submitted his sign permit for isn't allowed in a residential zoning district, which is what this is currently zoned, the MF2 being a residential zoning district. So the, we've contacted the property owner, and he's initiated a zone change for Office One. The office use shown on the screen is, for all purposes, foreseen to remain in place, and the zone change is to allow for the erection of the sign. And on the permit application that we have in our planning office, it's administratively reviewed and approved, it's indicated to be four feet in height and about 12 square feet, so a fairly unobtrusive freestanding sign. This is an aerial of the property at Main and French, shown in the yellow crosshatching. The, there's a government office across French from the property, and there's an office building that's an old home, Scott Home, across Main Street from the property. There's also a single-family glowing to the north and another dwelling with a garage department to the east. The property is designated auto-urban commercial on the future land use and character map, so this zone change request to Office One matches the, or complies with the future land use and character map. Adequate public facilities serve the site. French and Main are designated as local streets on the Therafair Plan, and the Therafair Plan says that local streets are, allow direct property access within commercial and residential areas, so the request complies with the Therafair Plan as well. This is the zoning in the notice map. The CA zoning is across the central area, which is mostly the downtown type of zoning, is across French from the subject property. There's 2F or 2-family zoning to the north and east, but the actual use of the property is single-family houses, for the most part. There's a neighborhood service zoning also across Main from the property. There were 10 notices mailed, and there were two notices returned in agreement of the zone change, as shown on the screen with the green As. On the November 17 meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted eight to zero in favor of the zone change request from MF2 to Office One, because the request complies with the future land use and character map, it complies with the Therafair Plan, and adequate public facilities serve the property. And at this point, I could answer any questions that the council might have on this case.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Counsel's questions?
Tell me again your, the proposal for the sign, the actual physical size and description on it.
Yes, it is to be four feet in height and 12 square feet in area, and the proposed placement of it is on the other side of the sidewalk, so on the private property where it's supposed to be, in the vicinity of the tree and some hedges here.
Okay, so a typical monument kind of sign.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? The item requires a public hearing. I'll declare the public hearing open at this time. Anyone who wishes to speak for the council on this item, please come forward and state your name and address for the record. Seeing no one wishing to speak, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Counsel?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion, a second for approval of the zoning change request. This is a real full discussion, then, Secretary.
Councilmember Jeter?
Aye.
Councilmember Janzak?
Aye.
Mayor Prochionlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Schneider?
Aye.
Mayor Jones?
Aye. Item 11, first reading in a public hearing, consider adopting an ordinance amending Chapter Seven buildings of the Code of Ordinances to add landscape irrigation ordinance as Article Seven, consistent with ordinance language complying with Texas Commission on Environmental Quality requirements and the City of Temple Water Protection Goals. Mr. Grant?
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. I'd like to just kind of introduce the item and introduce Robin Houston, who's our deputy city attorney, and she's going to talk a little bit more about the ordinance. I think following her comments, remarks, David Blackburn and myself, I'd love to have some comments we'd like to make as well. Let me just kind of set her up by saying that in the last session of the legislature, a bill was adopted that added a section to the Local Government Code, which requires cities with a population of more than 20,000 to adopt ordinances that regulate or that require irrigation system installers to be licensed by TSEC, and that they obtain a permit from the city when they're installing the irrigation system. This is what we would term, I guess, in the government business, a mandate or an unfunded mandate by the state, we're required to do this, and we're required to do it by the end of this year. So, we've had to work in a pretty short timeframe. I apologize for that. While the bill was adopted in this last session, the rules implementing it were adopted by the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality. They came out recently, and at the request of cities, TML, which is our organization of cities, adopted a model ordinance in September, so we've had a pretty short timeframe to work with this on. So, with that, I'll introduce Robin Houston to explain the ordinance, and again, we may have some comments as well.
Thank you, Ms. Gray. Ms. Houston?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. The House of 1656 requires cities with population above 20,000 to adopt this ordinance, requiring irrigation system installers to be licensed by the TCEQ and to obtain a permit from the municipality before installing a irrigation system. As Jonathan was explaining a moment ago, there was a sample landscape irrigation ordinance released by TML at the end of September. The statute requires the ordinance to be in effect by January 1st, 2009. TCEQ is adopting similar standards and similar licensing standards for the irrigators. It's also going to be effective at the beginning of January. The purpose of the ordinance is to comply with the state mandate, to protect the city's potable water system and supply, and to ensure that licensed professionals are performing installation and repair of landscape irrigation systems. The contents of the ordinance, I mean, basically, we're requiring, it's requiring irrigation system installers to be licensed and to obtain a permit from the city, requires certain backflow prevention methods and devices. There are system requirements from the beginning of it, from plan design all the way through completion, and there are also requirements for maintenance, repair, alterations, advertising, types of contracts, and the warranties. The ordinance will require a certain amount of city inspection and permitting. It anticipates fees. There's a potential to offset with self-reporting and verification by staff, and there are fines set for violation. One of the areas that I think we might want to have some discussion on is the backflow prevention. There are, the preferred backflow prevention devices are air gaps and reduced pressure-principle backflow prevention assemblies. Air gaps, from my understanding, cost more and are not practical in many systems. Pressure vacuum breakers and atmospheric vacuum breakers are being phased out by the, by TCEQ in January. Double-check valves, which were originally part of the model, part of the model ordinance but are an optional part of the model ordinance, are not optimal in high-risk systems. Irrigation systems are high-risk systems because of the types of chemicals that are placed on lawns, like fertilizers. They should not be allowed in our system even with additional safeguards set out in the TML model ordinance. Reduced-pressure assemblies or RPZs allow water to drain out the bottom of the assembly, and it doesn't go into contact with the potable water system. We've done some preliminary investigation into the difference in cost between double-check valves and RPZs, and we're still looking into this, and we have some people here tonight that can answer questions about this. But it looks like, from what we've looked at preliminarily, the double-check valves, the actual components, cost about $98. RPZs cost about $147 to $150. The difference in the prices range between 50 and upwards if you include installation in the entire package. RPZs will be more visible above the ground than some of the other systems. Currently, we're charging $5 for lawn sprinklers with up to five heads and 50 cents per additional head. The 7-113 is going to require a licensed irrigation inspector to enforce this ordinance, including verifying the permits, verifying the licenses, inspecting the irrigation systems, determining compliance of irrigation systems, looking at the correct installation and testing of the backflow prevention devices, investigating the complaints, and maintaining records. Section 7-115 would allow us to create a scheduled fees by a separate resolution, if that's the direction that we were going to go. We have a couple of suggested changes that we can also answer questions about. We are suggesting deleting following definitions from Section 7-100, and that's atmospheric vacuum breaker, double-check valve, and pressure vacuum breaker, and deleting Section 7-103B3 and B4, which would allow pressure vacuum breakers and atmospheric vacuum breakers. And as I was saying a little earlier, it's because we are under the impression that TCEQ is phasing out these particular systems. I'm available for questions, and also have program area people who can answer specific technical questions if you have any.
Thank you, Ms. Houston. Just one quick question. You said in there that we're requiring an installer to be a licensed installer. Does it require an irrigation system to be installed by a licensed installer?
Yes, it does.
So a homeowner can no longer put in their own system?
There are some exemptions for homeowners.
Okay, well, that's the question. I mean, a homeowner can still put in their own system, but they, but they still--.
They still have to comply.
Still have to get a permit.
And they have to comply with the--.
And at which point would we, a homeowner-installed system, would we absolutely do an inspection of that system to be sure that the proper valves were put in place that are required under this? That we might not require under, by a licensed installer because they're self, as we're proposing, self-policed?
I would, I would think so as well, Mayor. I mean, if, I mean, a licensed irrigator's going to install it correctly, not to say that an individual wouldn't, but there's no inspection, there's no--.
But we have--.
It's right. There's nothing that says that--.
They're not licensed.
They're not licensed, yeah.
And if I could also ask, the license that we're talking about is the state of Texas Irrigator's license?
Yes, correct.
Okay. So we're not creating--.
We're not creating a new license.
It's the, it's the license that's, under the Texas Occupations Code and Title 30, it's Texas Administrative Code, Chapter 34, so there's some provisions found in the Occupations Code, there's some found in TCEQ's rules and codes.
So there are not installers out there that are not licensed, are there, to best your knowledge?
There are, yeah, I mean, I think that there are people--.
And if there are, this, if there are, this new ordinance would not allow them to install in our city.
That is, I think, one of the, one of the drivers behind the ordinance, is to not allow people who don't have some sort of license to install irrigation systems.
Mr. Graham, Mr. Blackburn, other comments?
I think maybe reserve my comments to have to the public.
Mayor, just very briefly, I'll just echo what I think Mr. Graham indicated earlier in his comments, just introducing the ordinance, but we'd like to restate, the primary objective, the primary driver from the city standpoint was to comply with state law. Our efforts and our initiatives are certainly open to discussion and dialogue on how best to do this, and I would submit to you, the best includes what's the lowest impact on existing businesses, as well as what's the lowest impact on city resources and city processes. And so we're certainly, again, amenable to trying to discover what route is best in both those circumstances, and look forward to the discussion.
Thank you, Ms. Gray. Other questions from council, comments? Will we go to public hearing?
At this point, we're not suggesting an increase in fees by the city, are we?
No. I think what we're contemplating is, if that is your direction, that if we do that by separate resolution, it wouldn't be property ordinance in any event, so you'll have an opportunity to make that decision at some point if you want to raise the fee. We have, as she said, we have a pretty nominal fee right now in place, and if you choose to change that, it would have to come back to the council.
So we're not contemplating a registration fee with the city of licensed installers? Because they have to be licensed anyways, and--.
Still have to show, oh, so maybe they'll show a permit, but then they get the permit.
And I think what we're talking about, help me here, but it's probably more in terms of if we are going to be doing a significant number of inspections and we want to charge a fee for that, or are we going to rely on kind of a self-policing, where they certify licensed people, do it under a permit, and certify that they've done it correctly, and then we do some spot checks or something, then you might have to make a decision about whether you want to charge an additional fee for that.
We'll just leave that out on the table, and that's, it sounds like a good spot to go into a public hearing. I'll declare the public hearing open at this time. Anyone who wishes to speak before the council on this item, please come forward and state your name and address for the record. If I have any comments.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. Trey Glass and Temple Area Builders, 12 North Fifth. I appreciate the opportunity to come before you tonight to discuss this new irrigation ordinance that is proposed. Understand completely that this is a mandate from the state of Texas, and that y'all are sort of a rock and a hard place in terms of time on this ordinance. We have discussed this ordinance with some of our irrigation members of our association, and have been briefed on some of their concerns, and would just like to state, and I've prepared a memo to this effect that each of you should have by now, I believe, that indicates that there will be some additional cost as far as irrigation systems go as a result of this ordinance, and would just like for you to keep in mind that aspect of the ordinance. And would just like to advocate for the least restrictive ordinance possible. I believe that you do have a little bit of flexibility in terms of implementing this ordinance. I know that y'all have talked about, you can charge an irrigation, charge for an irrigation permit and renewal of a permit, you can employ or contract with a licensed irrigation inspector to implement the program, and as was already stated, there's an issue in terms of backflow prevention that I, it's pretty technical, I can't really speak to it, but there are some folks that are in the crowd here tonight that can give you their expert opinion. And so I would just appeal to you to please, if there is a possibility for us to be involved as we devise this ordinance, we'd sure appreciate that opportunity, and that's really all I have to say unless you have a question for me. Thank you.
Questions from the class? As always, sir, from me.
Mr. Mayor, councilmember staff, Tony Gallagher, Heart of Texas Landscape Company, here to talk about this new ordinance. I've been aware of it for a long time. State's been bringing it down for a while. They didn't want to enforce it, so they found out that they could make y'all do it, and that's pretty much most laws. We've been required to be licensed, we've been required to do a lot of things for a long time, but this is their way of getting it done without them spending any money. And so we've expected this for a while, and we've been preparing for it, so it's not a real big deal to us. The RPZ backflow preventer, of course, is because it is not mandated by the state for us to use that. We understand it is for high-risk chemical, all the contamination, should I say. But at this point, the state is not mandating it. With the new mandates by the state, it will increase the cost by, incurred by contractors and the homeowner, taxpayer. They're already going to get that mandate by state. And the city mandate, that's going to increase it even more, because I saw the city's estimates, and I don't know what size components they're using, because for each size, like anything else, except kids' clothing, it goes up. So, I can't, I can't tell you exactly what they're quoting, but I know my prices are higher, and I've got prices from my suppliers at my cost, not what it would cost somebody who is not a contractor to get off the street. So, it's a, it's a little higher than that significantly. But the pressure loss is also affected with RPZ. It's 11 pounds loss versus four with a backflow device. And I don't know if there's any record here locally or anywhere in the county where there's been any contamination and where there's been a failure of a backflow, or a double-check assembly, should I say, double-check-- assembly, should I say, double-check versus RPZ. The state had mandated it, so I know there's low hazard and high hazard, but at this point, I don't see the reason to go to double-check, I mean, from double-check to RPZ. And as far as the inspections for the city, that's, that's an issue with your staff, of course, and it's a lot of time if you, when you can go in, put an installation of an irrigation system in one day, and you have to send an inspector out there to look at everything, y'all aren't just sitting around waiting on the phone call, the staff at the city. So, it could hold up the irrigation job, which they would have to bring back people for the second day to cover everything up, which incurs more cost. So, I believe that a spot check system due to pulling permits would be a lot better system than having to inspect before they cover up. So, looking at costs to the consumer, to the contractor, that's where I stay.
So, what we have all around Temple is double-checks right now?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
And in your experience, have you ever seen or experienced a failure in, in a double-check or any other kind of backflow prevention?
Yes, sir, in all of them. They do fail, but there are inspections. There again, the state, TCEQ's has had this for a long time, but it's not always in force. It's annual inspections of these backflow preventers, which it doesn't matter which kind you have, you would have to have it. So-
There's some counties currently in force an annual inspection of your backflow preventer and of your, of your system. I mean, you have to have it in writing with a certified guy, costs you about 70 bucks a year to, to go inspect your, your backflow.
Most commercials.
Check it's done. But, but I guess you're saying, leave it a double-check valve, limit the inspections to spot checks and possibly to the do-it-yourself or unlicensed installer, I guess.
Yes, sir. Well, the homeowners can legally put in a system, but it has to be done within the laws of the state and the ordinance of the city. So, if a homeowner does pull a permit, they're subject to inspection like anyone else.
Well, I would think that we would mandate in that case that we inspect it or disallow it. I mean, that's the, that's the option. Just not allow a homeowner to install their system. It's a, it's a, like I said, it can be a danger to them if it's installed incorrectly.
Well, they have a whole, the risk is if, if we're, which I would rather inspect them all, is they do it wrong and they gotta, they're significant expensive, they have to redo things, so, I mean, we just-
You can put a fee on a, on a non-licensed installer.
Sure.
And that's the homeowner, so that pays for the cost of the inspection and might encourage them to go to a licensed installer, make them think twice, they're going to do it themselves and it's a-
That's a good idea.
So, a non-licensed installer pays for a licensed installer.
So, if we, I mean, if we left it with a double-check valve, then that would mean that we would not, because there's some interpretation issues that, dealing with maintenance, that you might have to go in and retrofit, so that would be a non-issue even though the ordinance, I read the ordinance to say that you wouldn't have to retrofit unless you excavate at the water meter or the backflow prevention. So, it would basically negate that whole thing, correct? If we left it with, do we, and we do have the ability to leave it at the double-check. I mean, that is, I mean, that's one of the things that TCEQ allows us to do.
Correct.
They're, they're just phasing it out as a recommendation as of January, but they're not prohibiting it.
Pressure vacuum breakers and atmospheric breakers is what I saw, they're not double-check.
They're not, they're not phasing out the double-check.
Oh, okay, it's double-check.
The back, the back.
Okay, all right, clear.
Jonathan, when we talk about this and we approve this, can, can we add things to it? I mean, you know, suggest maybe that a system is not installed by, unless it's a licensed irrigator? I mean, we're talking about the water that we drink, and if it's done incorrectly, I mean, it's not a good thing. I don't know what, I don't know what, you know, Tab or anybody else thinks about that suggestion, or, I think when y'all talking, if that's something to discuss, do we do that or not? That would alleviate the fact that the city would have to come out and inspect an irrigation system because-
Right. I think, I mean, if your question is, can we make some changes to this, we can. I think one of the things, as Robin pointed out, in, in the state law is, is it, it creates a right in a property owner on their own property to, to put one of these things in if they meet these criteria. They can be unlicensed and do it, and I don't think by local ordinance, we could now say you even, you can't do it even on your own property, if that's your question. But, we can say that because they're unlicensed and relatively inexperienced, we're going to inspect those, whereas we might use self-reporting, spot checking on a licensed one or something.
Jonathan, your, your concern, there's a timeline that we're on.
Are we, can we, do we want to close? Go ahead with the public hearing?
If there's more questions for Mr. Gallagher?
Well, it might, it might be wrong. I mean, he may, I mean-
And there may be others that wish to speak.
There's a, there's a timeline that you're trying to get this done by the end of the year to meet.
Right.
Okay, if, since this is a first reading, if it's approved today, and, you know, I, I agree with Mr. Glasson's, I think, you know, this is some things, we get feedback from them, we go, we have the ability to modify this for a second reading, so we have a, a window to try to figure out what, how, to meet the deadline of not getting spanked by the state, and, but to get people involved and get some feedback, that would be, that would be a good plan.
Well, I think Mr. Blackburn's comment about keeping this to do what's required and not impose anything else additional beyond what it is, which I think is in the spirit of Mr. Gallagher's comments, that should let us get this done. We need a couple of weeks with input from, from the community. And then, beyond that, if we want to add something to it, whether we choose to put a fee on a non-licensed, if we allow non-licensed, or any of those, we can, we can address that at a later date if we can't complete that for the next two weeks, but there shouldn't be a reason we can't get this in place by the state imposed deadline. Anything else for Mr. Gallagher?
Yes, I would. A quick question.
In your own opinion, how many, how many contractors are operating in Temple, Texas, installing irrigation systems that do not hold a state irrigator's license?
Monday through Friday or on Saturday and Sundays?
Knock out homeowners now, knock out-
Homeowners, there's not that many. There are some, there are some. And then, you get into that aspect of, some people put the small little, that is connected with potable water supply, but they want to water their garden, it's classified, through the irrigation system. If you pipe off that main line instead of using a hose bib, then that's where that comes into play. There's not that many, but there are, and at one point in time, Home Depot and Lowe's sold plans to do it all yourself, but it didn't work that well for people because-
No, I'm really talking about guys operating out of the back of the pickup truck, selling irrigate, or hire, selling an irrigation system.
That's why the state has put it on y'all's shoulders, pretty much, because they don't, they had no enforcement arm at all, and you could make complaints, but-
Well, and what I'm trying to, you know, are there one or two, or are there 20?
There's a handful, there's a handful. I couldn't place, I mean, fair.
That's fair. Okay, thank you.
I just don't think it's good to work if, I'm sure that's what he's trying to say.
They don't have warranties.
Handful's going to be away.
Thank you, Mr. Gallagher.
Thank y'all.
Appreciate your, your help and participation. Anyone else wishing to comment or speak on this item? Seeing no one else wishing to speak, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Counsel, your pleasure on the first reading.
Well, I, I make the motion that we pass this with the understanding that we will very quickly initiate getting some stakeholders involved and coming up with a plan to address it next meeting.
Thank you for your motion.
A second.
And we have second for the discussion. There being none, Madam Secretary.
Councilmember Jeter?
Aye.
Councilmember Janzak?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Luna?
Aye.
Councilmember Schneid?
Aye.
Ladies and gentlemen, that concludes our agenda. Thank you for your attendance this evening. We appreciate your participation. We are adjourned.